I want to get it. Can you see the hundred security place? She's in the right place. Shit, that almost. Still thinking. Well, she's, uh, right ahead of the poor gal here.
A bit. I would say stuffy more than hot, but it doesn't feel like the Arizona.
What's that?
Warm in here?
Seems warm.
All tattered.
Is it?
Yeah.
Where?
Uh, yet, um, for a second.
Okay, okay. It's, it's on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Which is, which is really the big issue, yeah, in my resource management.
Come send it to me.
Is Phil not here today, or is he just running late? Phil, is he not here today?
Yeah, he's here.
Jean, she wants to know, are we gonna take Williamson out first?
Yes.
Say anniversary to that?
Thirty years.
That's awesome. Congratulations. That's great.
Hard to believe.
Yeah.
Thirty years.
That's okay.
Thanks for making me look good, Phil.
Good morning. Welcome to the August 11th Board of Supervisors meeting. If you please stand with me as we pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Like to, uh, announce, I know we do have a translator here, so can we? I'm looking for my translator. Can you please announce that we do have translation equipment available for those that need, uh, translation services in Spanish?
Buenos dias. Tenemos, um, los equipos de traducción en la parte de atrás del cuarto para los que necesiten, um, los audífonos.
And those can be found in the back. Raise your hand if you need them. Okay, our first item of business today will be public comments. Those wishing to address this board on an item that is not on today's agenda may step forward. And I do have three requests to, uh, from folks to speak during public comment period. We'll limit it to fifteen minutes, three minutes each speaker. I first have Linda Shockley.
Good morning, Chairman.
Morning.
Members of the board. Today is a landmark day for nearly twenty-six-hundred Tulare County employees, August 11th, 2009. This day will not soon be forgotten by either part of us. We have worked long and arduous hours to come to an agreement that a decade ago wouldn't have even been thinkable. The bargaining team of SEIU 521 recognized long before we were even summoned to the table that this would be a year of grassroots bargaining. And none of us were surprised when your first proposal was for furloughs. You see, we are not a greedy people, as I feel certain that your own representative, Tim Huntley, could attest to, but we do represent a majority of Tulare County employees who provide the mundane, menial services to our community on a daily basis. We do this with kindness, caring, and integrity. We stand in the gap between services offered and services received. We care for the terminally ill, the emotionally ill, and physically ill members of our community day in and day out. We see the hope receding from their eyes when they are destitute, and we are only able to provide a Band-Aid when what they need is something far greater than that. We serve the jobless, the homeless, the helpless, and do so in hopes that we are making a real difference for them. We don't ask for much in return, but respect and a fair day's wage. And at this time, we are even willing to give back approximately 1.923% of our wages and our steps and merit increases in hopes of saving our coworkers' jobs. Our members voted, and the vote was ninety-seven percent in favor of the agreement. In addition to this, we have worked tirelessly to combine two previous contracts and your terms and conditions into a strong contract for our people. This was no easy feat to accomplish. I would like to recognize that this couldn't have been done without the perseverance and dedication of our own negotiator, Elaine Huntley, Elaine Carter, I'm sorry, and Tim Huntley, your negotiator, I'm sorry. A year from now, none of us knows what we will be facing, but the fact that we have proven that we are reasonable and flexible makes us think nothing is insurmountable and gives us hope for tomorrow. Of course, we'd like to be optimistic and think that this time next year, we'll be right back here reversing our losses and moving forward, but we have no crystal ball, nor do you. As far as I know, no one is exempt from these hard economic times. So it appears more imperative that we continue to dialogue with one another on economic issues as they arrive, arise, and we all know they will. We appreciate your joining with us in this economic struggle and decline by giving up a portion of your own wages along with us. This is exactly the kind of leadership the community of Tulare County expects and deserves. So we thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shockley. And by the way, I do not consider any of the services you provide, neither mundane nor menial. Uh, Daniela Ernest. And you can use either microphone there, and they do, the podium does go up and down if you need to.
Let's bring that down here. Cool.
I think we'll end the meeting on that note. Danielle, go ahead, go right ahead.
I earn sixty-four dollars at Zemwalt Park selling lemonade, and I'm not gonna be able to go to Disneyland if you guys keep on charging me the fee.
And how much is the fee, hon?
Fifty dollars.
It's fifty dollars? And is that to have like a vendor's fee there at the park? Is that to have like, is that what they charge you to have your lemonade stand at the park?
Health Department.
The Health Department? Okay. Danielle, we're going to work with our Health Department and your supervisor up here and see if we can help you out, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Lake.
You don't have to make it too high.
That's a difficult one to follow.
My name is Jean Lake, and I am a resident of Camp Nelson and appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion at the supervisors' meeting this morning. I have come here as a concerned citizen to suggest ways of eliminating costs within the various county departments, as the employees, as well as the county supervisors, all face a 1.923% decrease in wages. In a private household, when income is reduced, the average person tries to figure ways in which they can control expenditures. I know, I just negotiated an agreement with our propane provider whereby I will purchase propane in bulk now, at the current lower rate, to be used throughout the winter, thereby saving several hundred dollars as the price per gallon increases. Excuse me. I urge the supervisors to encourage the department heads to put down their pencils, get out from behind their desks, and go out into the field. Go to job sites, county yards, and offices to speak with and observe firsthand what the people that actually do the work can offer as cost-cutting measures while still being able to do the job properly. These are the core people, excuse me, that see waste and manage, and mismanagement on a daily basis. We don't need to create a special committee or spend unnecessary funds on a government study to obtain useful information. We have the resources already available with our current county employees' input to accomplish this task, and maybe by doing so can become more efficient and cut costs across the board. We don't have to be one of the poorest counties in the state. Let's quit doing things because it's always been done that way. Let's do it because it's cost-effective and makes sense. We need to be forward-thinking, innovative, and proactive. Thank you for listening to my suggestions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lake. In fore-year information, this county did hold a series of meetings with all of its employees throughout, all four thousand employees plus, had the opportunity to work on a bottom-line committee, which I believe several hundred suggestions did come straight from the employees to help reduce costs, and many of those have been implemented. So thank you. Your comments are very timely. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board during public comment time on an item that's not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we will move to Board of Supervisors matters. We'll start at my left, Mr. Vanderpoel.
I don't have anything to say this morning.
Mr. Worthley.
Uh, just, just a comment, a follow-up on what you were talking about, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, since we have a pretty good-sized crowd here, it might be well worthwhile to say just a little bit about the county's financial situation and that, um, the, we talked about the 1.93% reduction in salary, which comes about from a forty-hour furlough, uh, but the, the target actually for all of our departments was seven-and-a-half percent reductions, and those have been met by a variety of things. Uh, we have, we have curtailed some of our benefits that we've provided in the past. We've stepped column, increases have been frozen, we have a hiring freeze on. So we have done a myriad of things to meet this, uh, these tough budgetary situations, and I think, you know, the public should be aware of what we're doing, and I know we report it, but it doesn't get out to a lot of folks, but this has been a very big project, a joint effort between all of employees, department heads, supervisors, and, uh, we're very appreciative of, of the willingness of our bargaining units to work with the county to, to meet these difficult, challenging times. Uh, the one thing that gives me hope is that, uh, we know a lot of our sister agencies are, are facing much more serious situations. If we're looking at a seven-and-a-half percent reduction, Kern County's looking at fifteen percent, Sacramento twenty-one percent, Santa Cruz twenty percent. Those are very, very big numbers. I don't know how they're doing it. Uh, I know in Sacramento, they recently laid off a hundred and thirty-seven sworn deputies and over four hundred non-sworn employees in the Sheriff's Department alone. Uh, so, um, I, I guess it gives us hope that, all things being equal, we'll be the last man standing, and, um, I'm grateful that this board, over the years, has been conservative in its use of, of, of the public's finances, and I think that's, that's serving us well during these difficult times.
Thank you, Mr. Ashida.
I'd like to make a statement today that, uh, you'll notice that the last item on the agenda, I will, I will have to excuse myself, which pertains to the Williamson Act. Since I am active participant in the Williamson Act, I've been advised that I cannot participate in formulating a policy for Tulare County. So, in lieu of that, we have two, uh, supervisors that have all the skills to do that, and they have set up meetings with interested parties to figure out how we're gonna get around the loss of the $3.2 million from the state of California. So Supervisor Anis and Supervisor Worthley will be spearheading that effort, and I will be noticeably absent from that. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Anis.
Well, last week, I went to Porterville with Jed Cherebiath in what we thought was gonna be a gang summit meeting, which that's what we were told. And we got over there, and it was just more or less a, uh, let's see what kind of resources we've got in the city, and what we can do here, and what we can do there. We understand that, uh, a gang summit is not a cure-all, but it's one facet the community can do to educate people, and that's what we're trying to do with these gang summits, is bring people together, educate them, students, parents, leaders in the community, and bring them up to speed on what's really going on within their community and their assets they do have. Bring in the speakers they have. Bring in the resources they have. The county wants to help, but, uh, I just didn't receive what I thought was gonna happen over there. So, a little bit, little bit upset about it. I really was. A little bit, uh, I don't know, just kinda let down. I thought we really had something, I thought we were gonna put something together for the Porterville area and, and do something that the community can be proud of. So, I'm gonna continue to work, and I'm gonna continue to work with Porterville and the surrounding areas to get a gang summit over there. So, I just want the people of Porterville and that area to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Worthley.
Chairman, I just, uh, thought, I meant to mention this, but I'm sure everybody's been aware of the incident which occurred up in my district in Dinuba recently, where, um, in a, um, crash that occurred, uh, with a car that had been stolen and was being pursued by the city police, fire ran a stop sign, killing the three occupants of that car, and then killing five children, um, of a family, the Salazar family, and the mother and father are in critical condition at this time. And, uh, to let you know that, uh, the Bank of America has set up a Salazar family fund. We know just from the standpoint even of funeral expenses, this is gonna be a tremendous burden on the family. So, if anyone is so inclined to want to help contribute to that, I wanted to make that people aware of that. Bank of America, you can go to any Bank of America branch, doesn't have to be Dinuba branch, any branch, and they're prepared to receive funds for the Salazar family.
Thank you. It was a very tragic event. I have, uh, two things. We are preparing, as, as the agriculture museum in Moonee Grove nears completion, we are planning, uh, two events. The fifteenth of October will be the grand opening of the museum, a evening-type event. The Saturday, October seventeenth, will be a free day in the park. There are literally dozens of vendors, service providers, going to be providing information and even job opportunities, from what I understand, and, uh, there will be music, entertainment, a lot of fun activities for the entire family to celebrate the one-hundred-year anniversary of Moonee Grove Park in Tulare County. Along with that, the Board of Supervisors is sponsoring a centennial celebration logo art contest. Interested citizens of Tulare County are encouraged to, um, design a one-hundred-year, a centennial logo for Moonee Grove Park, and there are flyers that look like this on our front counter, on the front counters of many of the, uh, departments, and they're also being handed out at the park gates. So, folks are encouraged to participate in that. And, and that is free as well. There's a $250, uh, award for the logo that will be used, uh, as a centennial logo for the park. Okay, I've been asked to, Supervisor Ashida mentioned our last item. I've been asked to make our last item, our first item, before our timed items, item number forty-three, which we will be discussing, the Williamson Act. So we've been asked to have that as our first discussion, so we will...
Mr. Chairman, I have to excuse myself.
We'll excuse Mr. Ashida.
And, and before, since Mr. Ashida is excusing himself, I would just like to, uh, make a disclosure that I do have family which does participate in the Williamson Act, uh, program. However, I do have no financial interest in that property or in the businesses that operate on that property, so I am not going to be refusing myself, but I wanted to make that public disclosure.
Thank you. Cool.
It works.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, supervisors. I am David Claxton, Chief Planner for Tulare County Resource Management Agency. The item before you this morning is to look at alternatives to the Tulare County Williamson Act program and seek direction, uh, for staff. As you know, on June 2nd, 2009, RMA, in partnership with the Assessors' Office, made a presentation before the board and provided you with background on Tulare County's Williamson Act program, including, uh, some extensive review of, uh, financial impacts of the program and a number of alternatives for a work program in order to, uh, um, improve the program. On July 28th of 2009, Governor Schwarzenegger vetoed the Williamson Act program subvention funding. He left $1,000 in the funding program. Uh, the cost to the county will be approximately $3.4 million annually. Like to give you a brief overview of the Williamson Act lands in Tulare County for a point of reference. There's 1,107,000 acres currently within the Williamson Act program. That equates to approximately 35.1% of all of the land in Tulare County. There are over 14,000 parcels, 4,255 agricultural preserves, 6,611 individual contracts, and there are currently 41,910 acres in, uh, non-renewal of one form or another, and that equals 591 parcels. This is a breakdown of the various categories. As you will see, little over 582,000 acres are in prime farmland, 511,000 in non-prime, and there is a small amount of land in the farmland security zone. Those parcels typically are located, uh, adjacent to urban areas. This map, which you've seen before, gives a general overview of where those parcels are located. The, uh, yellowish to the right of the map is a non-prime, mostly the grazing lands in the foothill areas. The lighter green is the prime land down in the valley area.
David, just before you move on, I just, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think it's worthy of note that when we look at this map, you think, well, that looks like the whole San Joaquin Valley portion, I mean, it looks like all Tulare County is in Williamson Act contracts, and what, what we're not seeing are the public lands, because half of Calif, half of our county is owned in public land. So when you look at the thirty-five percent, or thirty, whatever the percentage was of land you show as being within Williamson Act contracts, when you take out the public lands and you take out the cities, you can see it covers almost the entire county. I think it's worthy of note that that is, it's very, very substantial in terms of the percentage.
That's a very good point, and, uh, I think a good exercise that staff can go through to actually run the numbers and see what that percentages. Okay, there are several options for modifying the Williamson Act, uh, program that are available to your board based on the current actions by the state. The first would be a county-initiated non-renewal of substandard parcels. We went through in our presentation on June 2nd, uh, an analysis in general of those parcels that are substandard. Another alternative would be a county-initiated batch non-renewal of all Williamson Act contracts. Another one would be to establish a moratorium on all new agricultural preserves and contracts. And a third alternative would be, uh, to look at the development of assessment district, uh, with the current Williamson Act contract holders. I'm going to take a couple of moments and discuss two of these options with you. First is the, uh, non-renewal option. Tulare County non-initiated, uh, non-renewals would affect the following. It would affect 14,197 total parcels, 13,698 Williamson Act parcels are currently active, and they're not going non-renewal. What that means is that there's 9,750 owner slash contract combinations that would need to be non-renewed. Okay? In order to implement this, the county would have to establish a procedure and develop a streamlined process in order to expedite this non-renewal, one, to be efficient, but also to reduce costs. Okay? There's 9,750 contractor-owner combinations that would need to be processed. We estimate, based on the program that Kings County has adopted, uh, they adopted back in 2004 for their streamlined process, that it would take approximately two to three man-hours per contract in order to do the non-renewal. That equates to somewhere between just under 20,000 to just under 30,000 man-hours in order to accomplish the batch non-renewals. Depending on what your hourly, uh, load is for the employees handling that, you could be looking in excess of half a million dollars in order to process it. In order to have the non-renewals effective next year, all of the applications for non-renewals would have to, uh, be accepted prior to November 2nd of this year. Okay? Both the existing general plan and the draft general plan would need to be looked at in terms of consistency related to that action. related to that action. And it is believed that a secret review would probably be required, given Tulare County's program size. This is a table which was presented to you on June 2nd, and what this provides you is a look at how the properties would come out of the Williamson Act and what the total lost revenue to the county would be over the nine-year renewal process. And as you can see, you're looking at just under $13 million in lost revenue prior to all of the properties reaching market value and the county hitting a break-even point.
David, but that's if we received the subvention.
No, this is assuming that we do not receive the subvention, that the subvention program is gone.
We're losing $12 million?
We will lose $12 million.
Oh, I see. We would lose approximately $32 million of subvention, and then you'd have the offsetting income, so the end of, the end of net result would be a loss of 12. I think it's important to put it in that context, however. I mean, to just say we're losing $12 million, if we do nothing, we lose $32 million. If we do this, we lose $12 million.
Correct. Okay, I'm going to look at another option for you. Buttoned too fast. Tulare County could create its own Tulare County Agricultural Conservation and Preservation Program. The program could include the following components. We would continue to implement all of the existing provisions of the Williamson Act program. We would retain all of the existing preserves, honor all of the existing, honor all of the existing land preservation contracts. The existing reduced assessed valuations for the Williamson Act properties would continue. We would create a special zone of benefit, which would include all of the property covered under Williamson Act in Tulare County. This would be called an agricultural lands assessment district. We would implement an annual assessment based on gross assessed annual production values using a modified version of the existing annual assessment process used by the Tulare County Assessors' Office. We would amend the existing Tulare County Williamson Act uniform rules as necessary to either cancel or non-renew all contracts covering parcels which are deemed either substandard or fail to meet the ongoing production requirements. The benefits of such a program would include an offset of the lost subvention revenue, $12.7 million, plus or minus over a 10-year period. It would save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars in non-renewal processing costs. It would provide true funding to support the conservation and preservation of the county's most valuable resource. It would allow the county to tap into the industry that currently generates over $5 billion in annual sales. A small annual assessment would be far, a small, a far smaller financial impact in most cases than what the annual property taxes would be at full market assessment. The annual assessment based on gross production assessment value would provide the county with consistent funding while sharing the risks associated with the agricultural production of each producer.
David, before you go on, I think if you could back up to that last slide, you might want to explain the bullet point next to the last paragraph.
I'd be happy to.
Because I think a lot of folks don't really understand that concept.
What we would be, again, proposing is a special assessment within a Williamson Act assessment zone. The assessment would be such a small percentage of the gross production value of any given parcel, that the dollar amount of that assessment would be far smaller in most cases than if the property were being assessed at its full market value. So as an example, if we were to use the option of non-renewing all of the Williamson Act parcels, in 10 years, all of those parcels would be at full non-renewal, and everybody would be at full assessed value. The amount of taxes that each individual property owner would pay under that scenario, we believe would far exceed the small additional assessment that would be generated under this plan. The initial basis of this plan was to recoup the $3.4 million in lost subvention. And if you have a $5 billion industry, $3.4 million is essentially a percentage of a percentage of a percentage of a percentage. It's very, very small in relationship to that, the overall value of the industry.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. First question, David, what, are there any other counties, maybe not in California, but maybe in the United States, that have a similar type of ag preservation program that we can look to for examples, or is this something that you guys came up with based on what you think Tulare County program could look like?
We're not aware of anyone in the state of California that is looking at this option at this time, and quite frankly, I don't know of anyone nationwide either.
But Tulare County is definitely one of the largest beneficiaries and users of the Williamson Act program in the state, correct?
We're the second largest in the state.
Okay, okay. And then the second question that I had, when you're looking at this sort of a plan, is there any effort to form maybe a committee consisting of RMA folks, maybe the two supervisors that were mentioned, and then also stakeholders, community stakeholders?
Yes, I was going to cover that a little bit further into my presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Additional benefits. Since the assessment is based on production value, the producer would pay less during years of poor production or during years of crop transition. So as an example, if the citrus industry suffers a frost, they would not be assessed as much as they would in a bumper crop year. And if you look at the ag report that was presented to the Board earlier this year, you will see that even in down years from one crop to another, gross revenue is very consistent and showed an annual increase of somewhere to 2% to 3% per year. The plan would potentially provide cost recovery for the county agricultural planning activities, including implementation of some dairy program activity, potentially provide cost recovery to the Assessors' Office for activities related to the annual assessments. It would protect Tulare County's agricultural land from premature conversion, would protect the integrity of Tulare County's unique Rural Valley Lands Plan. This plan appears to be consistent with the draft 2030 general plan update, and as annual production values increase, so would the county's revenue stream from the district. Under the current subvention plan, it's $1, $5, and $8, depending on your type of land, and it's pretty much locked in. This would actually provide for some inflationary growth. Plan implementation at this point, what we envision is getting board, general board consensus that this may be a workable alternative. We would establish a stakeholder group to focus on the relevant issues, strategies, and direction, and this would include RMA planning, the CAO's office, the Assessors' Office, Tax Collector's Office, County Council, the Ag Commissioner, University of California Cooperative, the Farm Bureau, and of course, the Board. We would continue to seek legal input from County Council on issues. We would also seek input from professionals in actually establishing these assessment districts and zones of benefits, as there are a number of issues that RMA staff is not, that we're not in the business of setting up the assessment districts, so I'm sure there's some issues floating out there. We would work closely with the Assessors' Office and their IT team to identify an acceptable gross production assessment value. If that could not be done, then the assessment could actually be established on a dollar-per-acre basis for direct subvention recapture, i.e. $1, $5, and $8 per acre. We'd prepare an extensive cost-benefit analysis on the proposed plan and implementation costs, and we'd probably, as part of that, look at the analysis of the batch non-renewal as an alternative. And then we'd bring it back to your Board. And so that's a quick overview of the two primary alternatives, and we'd like to seek direction as to how to move forward with our work program at this time. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chairman, just a couple of follow-up things. I believe at the point you've gotten in terms of a step-by-step process, then it would have to probably go to the local area formation commission, you're establishing a new assessment district, you have to go to a vote. And I'm assuming the vote could be taken of just the affected properties, it's not have to involve, in other words, it would be a landowner decision as opposed to a popular vote. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's a, it's a LAFCO vote, and it's 50% of the landowners plus one.
Just, I appreciate you bringing this forward, David. I think it's very innovative thought, and it has a lot, I mean, there's a lot for us to go through, and there's some issues, of course, in terms of timing. And one of the things that comes to my mind is that if we decide we want to go in this direction, concurrent with that, it would be wise for us to look at cleaning up the substandard parcels so that we're not, you know, applying this benefit to folks who buy 20 acres for a home site, and then, you know, it's not really about agriculture. It's about getting their taxes reduced for their homesites. So I think it would be appropriate to look at this in conjunction with cleaning up our roles. But I think it certainly has a lot of merit to it. I can't imagine why we would not want to try to proceed with this. There seems to be a lot of benefits that it can bring, and there are a lot of hoops to be jumped through, not the least of which is convincing people who are affected by this that this would be in their best interest. And that's why I asked you to talk a little bit about that other one. And there's more conversation, I think, to be had about that in the future, so that people understand there really would be a benefit to going this way over an alternative, which would be the batch approach of non-renewal on all properties.
Mr. Chairman, I have one point. I agree with what Supervisor Worthley said. However, there are some 20-acre parcels that are certainly agricultural, and maybe they do have a home on them, but that could be the primary source of income or a certain effort at agriculture, and so that should not be exempt from this sort of a program. I think that we have to be very careful with that.
I think an analysis has to be done. I think that you're correct in saying that people who make a living from farming ought to have the benefit of the Williamson Act contract. But what I see happening in many places is people, and it's pretty obvious that farming is incidental as opposed to primary, when someone buys a 20-acre parcel and they go right out into the middle of that parcel and put a big, you know, McMansion out there, and, you know, trying to farm around that property is very, very difficult. Farming is incidental to the real purpose of the property. But if we can make those distinctions, I'm not sure, but I think that's something we have to look at. And then we also know we have a lot of smaller acreages that we've applied the Williamson Act contracts to, 10-acre parcels, acres, parcels that are under 10 acres. And so there's opportunity to look at, I think, this whole thing. And I'm not saying we make the judgment call today. It's just a concept or principle we need to look at. Williamson Act contracts ought to be for the benefit of agriculture. It ought not to be for the benefit of folks who dislike living out in the country like I do.
Or lower taxes.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make this point. Being a special district like that, that money stays here. We don't have to fight California for it anymore, and we can control our own destiny and our own future. So I think that's what we're trying to do here, save a program, keep the money here, and move forward.
Yeah, if I might, if I might piggyback on that, you know, what we have found in the last years since Governor Schwarzenegger has been governor is that there has been every year an effort to eliminate the subvention of Williamson Act dollars to the counties. And last year, we saw a 10% reduction, and the proposed budget this year was for an additional 20% reduction. And because of the failure of the Assembly, thank goodness, to not pass the highway users tax theft, the governor had blue-penciled out the entire amount, except for the $1,000 you mentioned. But we have expended a tremendous amount of political capital every year trying to keep the subvention. And we have other fish to fry with the state of California besides just the Williamson Act contracts, but we have used up a lot of our political capital just to deal with this one issue. And to piggyback on what Supervisor Ennis is saying, by going in this direction, we can, we can expend our political capital in other areas besides the Williamson Act contracts, which right now takes up an awful lot of our energy and time.
Let us not forget, the state continues to collect the tax, which sometimes is three and four times what the amount of a regular property tax would be. I see we have a member of the Farm Bureau here, or representative. Would you like to say anything before we move on? Potential partner in this escapade.
Thank you. Good morning. Tricia Stever, representing Tulare County Farm Bureau. We're just appreciative of the opportunity to be at the table. We really think this is an innovative idea, and we have a State Land Use Director at California Farm Bureau that I think will also be watching this closely, because there aren't any other models in California that we're aware of. Mr. Solins with Cooperative Extension was commenting that there are some very innovative progressive models on the East Coast in places like Pennsylvania. So there are some other states that we may turn to to look for some direction. But certainly really commend Mr. Claxton and all that RMA is doing to advance this concept. I agree that there's a great benefit here for landowners to look for solutions other than moving into a regular Prop 13 value on that land. And certainly, I think, one of the real devil in the detail situations we'll have to look at is gross assessment, and what really trickles down to be the bottom line for that producer, because we know gross values that are reflected in the Ag Commissioner's report annually aren't always exactly what that farmer is living on. So we want to make sure that that assessment is as realistic as possible for making sure this is advantageous to landowners and to producers. So we look forward to the stakeholder meeting and that process, and are certainly supportive of this Board and their efforts to create this opportunity for agriculture. Thank you.
So I'm going to assume that we are going to recommend all options to our staff to proceed as follows.
Is this an action item?
This is an action item.
I'll move that we direct staff to proceed with investigation, research into this program.
Second, Dave.
Is this including all four recommendations?
Yes.
Still second? Okay, cast your vote. It's unanimous. Let's move forward rather quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's worthy of note, you amended the motion somewhat, because the idea is to consider all options. I mean, I think there's a preferred approach to try to find something like the assessment district.
Well, that's one of the options.
But it is one of the options. And, you know, for instance, it does take a vote. We could, we could have the whole thing laid out and have it all agreed to, and then if it fails at a vote process, the Board will have to consider other options. So I think, I think it's wise to say we look at all options. Certainly, I think the assessment approach has, at this point, the most promise for all people concerned.
Okay, we'll now move to our consent calendar. Item 12 has been polled and will be continued to August 25th. Do we need to, Council, do we need to take that as a separate motion, item 12, to continue August 25th? Okay, so are there any other items that need to be pulled by members of the Board of Supervisors? Any items from the consent calendar needs to be pulled by public for separate consideration? Okay, seen none, we will...
I would move for approval, consent count, item six through 40, less item 12.
I'll second that.
Okay, cast your vote. It's unanimous. Supervisor Sheeda now re-entering the stage. We will now consider item number 12 to be continued till August 25th.
I'll move that that item be continued to August 25th.
Second.
Moved by Vanderpul, seconded by Worthley. All of them favor. Okay, we will now take up our first public hearing, which is item number three, request from Resource Management Agency to approve sewer and water user fee adjustments for specific county service area zones of benefit as listed. Mr. Fussell. And as a reminder, we do have translation services available if you need them. Headphones are in the back. Can we make that announcement again, please?
Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource...
Let's make our announcement one more time in Spanish for those that might need it.
Recuerda, Tori, nada más que tenemos los audífonos para la traducción disponibles en la parte trasera del cuarto. Si pasan, por favor.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is the annual rate adjustment public hearing for the Tulare County Zones of Benefit. The county operates 11 small sewer and water systems. El Rancho Sewer, Delph Colony Sewer, Water System in Delph Colony, Sewer System in Seville, Sewer System in Tonyville and Tulleville, Sewer System in Traver, a water and sewer system in Yedam, and a water and sewer system in Wells Track. A map, a little tough as to the locations of these. Also, for a point of interest, Delph Colony wastewater treatment is through a wastewater treatment plant operated by the county. The same with, lost my mouse, same with Traver. In the case of Yedam and Seville Sewer, we purchased treatment capacity from the Cutler-Rosi Joint Powers Wastewater Treatment Facility. In Wells Track, we purchased water and sewer capacity from the city of Woodlake. In Tulleville, the county operates a wastewater treatment plant. And in Tonyville and El Rancho, we purchased sewage treatment capacity from the city of Lindsay. And then also on the map is Terabella, which is actually a sewer maintenance district. And that is not a topic of discussion this morning. I also want to point out for the board and those in the audience that when we sent out the initial public hearing notice, we identified a need for a rate increase in Wells Track water. As we were putting together the agenda item for the public hearing, we concluded that that was not necessary. So in your resolution, in your packet today, the staff is not recommending a rate adjustment for Wells Track water.
Can I ask you a question there real quickly?
Yes, sir.
Is, has that Wells Track water, does it have a balance due to the so-called revolving fund?
No, it actually has a positive cash fund balance. So it actually has...
It's paid back any loans that were made?
Any loans that may have been paid are paid back. I believe there's actually $78,000 in positive fund balance for Wells Track water.
Thank you.
These are, following are the tables that are in your packet. Again, trying to get all this information on the screen, a little bit tough. But this table here identifies the results of last year's activities with the current fee structure. And you can see at the bottom line, the estimated loan from the revolving fund for all 11 of these is about $26,000, which is down significantly from what we had presented to the board last year. And this is a result of very carefully trying to manage these budgets. And if there was a task that we've identified in the budget that needed to be done, we looked at it. If we concluded that we could get by one year without doing it, we did not do that. Now, that may result, at some point in time in the future, of something that needs to be repaired or replaced because of deferred maintenance. But as a result, we were able to get the need for a loan from the revolving fund for the '08, '09 fiscal year down to about $26,000.
Mr. Fussell, a question?
Yes, sir.
On the actual, or the estimated actual revenue, do we count those funds that are not collected, but we anticipate collecting through the process of assessments on the tax rolls?
The number that's there is actual revenue received.
So there would be a potential for additional dollars to come in?
Followed out. Now, what's, and these have operated on the teeter plan in the past. So whenever they rolled the property taxes, the zones got the money. So in the case of probably '08, '09, if it was, if it was teetered, we got the revenue. In the case of going into '09, '10, where you just rolled delinquent charges a couple of meetings ago, we're, I believe the county now canceled or terminated the teeter plan. So those are going to be based upon whether or not the property owner pays the taxes at the time they're due as to when that delinquent revenue would come in. You have a puzzled look.
Well, I'm just thinking the teeter plan was designed from the standpoint that the county got all of the funds. But in this case, the teeter plan still works in the sense that if they were getting the revenue benefit of teeter before, they should get it afterwards. In other words, people still have to pay a penalty.
That's correct.
And in the past, on the teeter plan, the county kept the penalty for other agencies, not necessarily for these.
Correct.
In this case, it still flows back to these, to these individual, well, to the county in its capacity. So I think just the benefit still exists.
There's, you're correct in that if there was, the penalty and the interest that's assessed, or the penalty that's assessed would flow back to the zones of benefit because they're not being teetered, whereas the penalty flowed to the teeter. The point that I was trying to make was that when we placed delinquent charges on the property tax rolls in past years, the zone got that revenue even though maybe the property owner did not pay their property tax bill, including the delinquent charge.
Oh, I could say there'll be a delay of getting...
There could be a delay if you have property owners who are habitual in not paying their property tax bill, even to the point that if it goes for five years, you could end up going to tax sale. I don't have an understanding yet of what that total impact is. I don't think, I don't think the five-year delinquency is a significant problem for the zones of benefit. The, this slide is the, a representation of what, based upon the budgets that have been prepared for each of these zones of benefit. And if we were to leave the rate structure alone, what we would anticipate being a need for a loan from the revolving fund, and it would be $153,000. And when we put these budgets together, we worked very closely with Water Dynamics, our vendor, to identify repairs or improvements that needed to be made in the zones of benefit. Then staff sat down with Water Dynamics and went over each one to determine whether or not it absolutely had to be done this fiscal year, or if it was something that needs to be done but could be delayed another year. And we actually identified several thousand dollars of work items that staff is recommending we don't do this year in order to keep the cost down and the impact to the revolving fund down. However, there are some items that, in agreement between the vendor and us, we do feel need to be done next year in those zones. Now, we also have some contingency funding in the zones in their budgets. And there may be items that we are recommending we don't do. They may come up and bite us, and we may need to do them in order to keep the systems operating. Table three is if the board adopts the rate increase as recommended by staff. The estimated need of revolving loan fund, again, taking into those items that I just discussed as to what we put in the budget as work elements, would be about $123,000. And again, over the next fiscal year, we would continue to look at these improvements. And if it's something that's been identified in the budget that we believe we can delay and not do because it's not necessary, we can get by another year, we would not do those in order to bring this number down as small as we possibly can. Again, staff recognizes the issues that the county is facing with the general fund going into the 2010 fiscal year. And then lastly is the table. We always add that if the board were to change its policy at limiting the rate increase to no more than 10% in any given year, what the rate structure would be in order to make these things break even, not counting for depreciation. What we do in our analysis for the revolving loan fund purposes is we do account for depreciation in budgeting. You can see it in the column that's up here on the chart. But when we identify the need for the revolving loan fund, we subtract depreciation out of that calculation so that the revolving loan fund is not funding depreciation. Appreciation should have been set aside over the life of these things to have money available to deal with these capital issues. But unfortunately, there has not been enough money in the budget to be able to do that. There is one error I would like to point out. I discovered it this morning as I was prepping for this presentation. House to work? There it is. Is this number right here in Delph Colony Sewer Zone of Benefit, that should be the $45 that we're proposing as the rate adjustment for today. And I apologize for the board. We hit the seven key instead of the four, putting that number into the spreadsheet. We, this public hearing was noticed pursuant to Proposition 218, which required mailed notice 45 days in advance of the hearing to all property owners. And in addition, we did publish this public hearing notice in the Visalia Times Delta. And the resolution that you're being asked to adopt this morning would include the attached exhibit, which would set the rate structure for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. And again, did notice that a rate adjustment, we did notice the public hearing that we would be adjusting Wells Track water, but we are not proposing that this morning. And with that, I would respond to any questions that the board would have.
Two very quick questions. Our revolving loan fund balance, I don't think I saw that in the report.
It's approximately $690,000.
$700,000. And you did mention depreciation. So are these numbers, are these, do we have any balances here to replace major items if something, or there's no depreciation built in whatsoever?
Other than Wells Track, which, as I mentioned, has about $78,000 in positive fund balance, some of the ones have small fund balances of maybe a couple hundred to a couple thousand dollars. There is no money setting aside in a reserve fund for capital replacement.
So if something major happened to a piece of equipment?
Then it becomes a budgetary item. And because of the rates are not fully recovering, all the cost plus depreciation, it becomes a loan to the general fund.
And we're not planning for any of those. As you know, $123,000 with a rate increase, we're not planning on any major replacements.
No major replacement. We do have a well issue we're dealing with in, I believe it's Yedam. Excuse me, let me see if I can find it. In Yedam Water, there is a concern about the water table dropping, and we need to drop a well in order to assure production. That's about a $21,000, excuse me, yeah, $21,000 expense. And in...
Not included in the budget?
No, it isn't. That was one that we did put in the budget. That was one item that we did identify. And in the same with Delph Colony Water, there's about $33,000 worth of well work that you've identified needs to be done next year in order to ensure water for the community. And that number is in your budget.
Any other questions?
Comment, question. Brett, we have received funds out from other sources occasionally for some of these capital projects happening. We've gotten funding from USDA or different kinds of bond issues and so forth for low-income communities. Have we received funds for some of those projects in the past?
The, there was USDA loan and clean water grants for the construction of the system when they were originally constructed. Since I've been involved with these for the last five years, we have not seen any other grants to do some of this work.
I guess I could see perhaps in the sewer, maybe more so on the water side. I know where there have been grants given for different, in different situations, for building of new wells and that sort of thing. I know that in the case of Cutler-Rosi's system, they, which is not part of our system, but they received a substantial grant and loan from USDA for some expansion, but primarily capital improvement of their system. So my only point is that there are sometimes occasionally funding that comes from other sources to handle some of these capital projects. And in the case of sewer plants, it's a little different than when you have to go out and punch a new well or something like that, put in a total well system.
We'll do some follow-up work and see what we can snag.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Brett, there's a community that really stands out on the flow sheet here, and that's Tulleville.
Yes.
And what is, what are the issues in Tulleville to put this step far? Why are the expenses so high in Tulleville on the sewer?
Tulleville is one that has a wastewater treatment plant. So the operating cost is more expensive, utilities plus our operator making, in our contract operator costs. We are proposing to do some capital work regarding a replacement of a concrete pad and light standard and doing hydroflush of the lines, which between our staff and the vendor feel is necessary. Tulleville is, because of the size of the system, has about a $22,000 depreciation amount in the budget. Again, when we do the revolving loan fund, that's actually subtracted out. Tulleville is already starting with about a $260,000, give or take some change, loan from the revolving loan fund. So its rate structure, I think, in the beginning was probably set too low to recover the cost of operating the system. And we've been trying to play catch-up since.
The next question I have is what happens if we walk away from that system?
I don't, well, there would be no one operating...
Let's say we hook up the Exter. What happens to that system and what is our financial liability?
I haven't analyzed that. I would say that if we could cook it, if we cook any of these systems up to a, another system for treatment purposes, there would probably be some cost savings because we could then leverage their capacity. The question would be, do we still maintain the lines and the lift stations to get the sewage there? Or do we somehow or another try to have that agency take on responsibility? We may still be in the mix somehow, absent finding another owner, if you will, of the system that would take that on and operate it.
Well, the question I have is a lot of times when we get these grants, that you have some type of liability, contingent liability, in case you abandon them or, well, especially if you abandon the facility. So I'd like to check that out. Because I heard on the way into the office this morning that Woodlake is planning to go out for a substantial amount of money to upgrade their sewer system. And we have had in the past an engineer study done to hook Lynn Cove to Woodlake. Because Lynn Cove has some septic issues. So what we're looking at in the Water Commission is you have to have sustainable facilities. And looking at Tulleville, you're going to have, if you zeroed them out on cost on your last page, you're at $93, $93 for sewer.
Yes.
So something's got to be done with these smaller communities if we can hook them up to a more reliable, and not only reliable, but sustainable system. And I think we need to start looking into what happens when we back out of a system that was probably financed by the federal government and the state to hook up to a municipal system.
I think the quick response to that is, a contract's contract. I think the county has to pay the money back. But one thing, one approach might be that if connecting it to a new system is substantially less because of the fact that you've got many people paying into the system, the difference, we might be, we might have to maintain a higher rate for a period of time to pay this debt, this debt load back. I don't know. I don't think you walk away from a debt unless you get some special relief from those obligations.
Just thinking off the top of my head would be if you were to find another source of treatment, I would think that's a better source of treatment, such as hooking to a city system, that the regulatory agencies and the lending agencies would think that that would be a great thing to do because it would stabilize them. I think as far as, in the case of Tulleville, if you hook them up to another treatment process, we would have a treatment plant that we would no longer need. And there might be some refund associated with that. But I would think you would look at it from a depreciated value perspective rather than the full cost of that treatment capacity. And then I also would think that we would definitely enter into some kind of negotiations to get that to go away if we were to pursue something like that. One of the issues we've faced, because previous, the board has talked about, well, we need to grow the base. If we could get some growth to occur in these areas and we get more rate payers, the fixed costs pretty much stay the same. You've got a broader base, cost per unit goes down. But we're experiencing growth constraints because of the limitations that was placed by the funding sources on the size of system that could be built in the first place. Secondly, in the case of purchasing... Secondly, in the case of purchasing capacity from the Cutler Rosi facility, we're basically at capacity, and they don't have an interest in selling us anymore, because they want to save it for their own boundaries. And a similar situation is with the city of Lindsay. El Rancho really can't grow very much, but there might be some opportunities in Tonyville, maybe. But Lindsay is saying, we need the capacity for our own community growth. We're not interested in selling it to the county of Tulare.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now. Any of those wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. If you need translation services, we have those available as well. If you use them, please speak slowly so that it can be translated. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Edward Estrada, and I own the Defoea Farm Labor Housing in Yedam. As you probably noticed, we pay more for water and sewer than anybody else in the county. And as, as a whole, the people that live in Yedam are very, very low income. And I myself, I'm the landlord of the farm labor housing, which the nature of farm labor housing is there's, you know, they come and go. I have vacancies. Initially, when the system was put in, in the early nineties, I was hoodwinked into letting them hook up the water system into my existing water system. I didn't realize that I, I would someday have a problem, because now, I can't, if I have a vacancy, I can't go on, on standby, they say, because they can't turn, turn the water off on that particular unit, because there's only one meter for the whole, the whole camp. But I was hoodwinked, and that's not fair. Now, the, the rest of the people that live in Yedam, I mean, they're, as a whole, like I say, they're, they're, they're very low income, and we're paying more, more money than anybody else. I don't know what you pay, but I'm, I'm sure that your water and sewer bill is considerably less than what we pay. And I think there's got, I, I heard that there are other sources of relief that can, that can be applied here, and why isn't it done?
What I was referring to, sir, was capital. These are operational costs.
Yeah.
And, and, and as it is, in adopting the proposed budget this year, which has these increases built into it, we still have to borrow a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to keep things going. And this is, I understand exactly what you're saying. This is a very difficult problem. It's difficult every year, because we're dealing with the lowest-income people of Tulare County paying some of the highest rates.
The highest rates.
It is what it is, because the county is subsidizing these rates, in this case, to the tune of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year. And every year, this happens. So we keep raising rates, but we're not getting to the, we're not at the place where it's a hundred percent recovery. We're, we're not close to it. We're a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars short. So that's the difficulty that we deal with as, as a board, is that we understand that this is a very difficult thing for people, but we're between a rock and a hard place, because we're asking the rest of Tulare County to subsidize these operations, and we're doing it at, at over a hundred thousand dollars a year. And the revolving fund is over six hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if anything, it's accelerated.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm looking at, from, from my, my standpoint, and in some cases, the water and sewer is almost half of what I collect in rent, and I have to collect, I have to pay the water and sewer, because I learned right away that you can't, you can't build the customer, because they don't pay it. And then I don't find out until tax time, and it's added on to my, my tax bill. So what do I do? I mean, and I raise my rents? If I, if I was charging too little for my, my rentals, I wouldn't have any vacancies. I have vacancies.
I understand.
Yes, sir, we're, we're not going to be able to settle, to, to solve your problem today, because like Supervisor Worthy said, we're looking at a subsidy of over a hundred thousand dollars for all of the systems. So we, we have others that would like to testify. There's no, there's no way that we can give you an answer to your specific problem right now.
Well, I've come, I, I come up every year when you have this, and I make my plea, it never works, but I have to say my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eunice Martinez. My address is twenty-three seventy-seven East Alfred Tullieville, California. Tullieville, we were recently informed that we have a sewage deficit of two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand plus growing with the county. This is why the county is proposing a service fee raise again. Where did that monster come from? Quoting a Tullieville resident, simple. It came from the county's general fund to pay back the county for subsidizing, subsidizing Tullieville's sewage system that was placed in the early nineties. The majority of the funding came from grant monies. Yes, there is a deficit, but of another kind also. Our voice of rule unincorporated communities are drowned out and forgotten by the busyness of city and county policymakers. We are uninformed. Year after year, the lending and borrowing continues. The interest of loans and grows, of loans grows and grows until, well, here we are, here we are voicing our alarm, our concern, and our frustration. Let me inform you, though, that many folks in Tullieville are wanting real solvable, solvable answers, not a Band-Aid. Tullieville has ideas and thoughts we are wanting to share and maybe implement them. Tullieville wants to be self-sufficient and fiscally responsible with the county's assistance and leadership. Raising the sewage rate will not alleviate or solve the deficit. Quickly, let me inform you that Tullieville has shown fiscal responsibility. I will give an example. In the last four years, Tullieville Mutual Water Company has gone from a chaotic, unorganized, broken mess to a self-sufficient, reorganized mutual, thanks to certain agencies, groups. We couldn't have done it alone. In conclusion, I would repeat that raising our sewage rate is not the only answer. Working together and communicating is a good start to finding solvable answers. Thank you for your time.
My name's Cindy Ann Lowe, and I live in Tullieville. My address is one zero zero four South Spruce Road. And I'm here because I'm concerned about the sewer rate for the, the hike that the county RMA has proposed for Tullieville, from fifty-three seventy-five to fifty-nine twenty-five, a raise of five fifty a month. Five fifty a month may not sound like much to you, but in this challenging economic times, it means a pound of hamburger, a box of hamburger helper, and two cans of corn to a family with mouths to feed. Tullieville is a predominantly low-income area, and families are having trouble making ends meet, and the thought of another five fifty per month raise is outrageous. What's even more outrageous and appalling is the fact that we just recently found out about the two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-dollar deficit that Tullieville owes to the county general fund, because the county has been borrowing from its, from it to help pay for the operation and maintenance of our sewer plant. When the sewer system was constructed back in the early nineties, the county agreed to subsidize Tullieville's sewer payments of seventeen fifty a month. Now, as time goes by, longtime residents move away or leave Tullieville, and so does their knowledge. Very few knew about this arrangement or the specifics of it. What was the amount of the initial subsidized, subsidized rate, and how long was this arrangement supposed to last? Obviously, it has never stopped, yet we were uninformed. Tullieville does not want to be uninformed and denied information that is rightfully ours. Information is knowledge, and with knowledge comes solutions. Tullieville wants to be self-sufficient. We do not want to be beholden any more than is necessary, and would like to work with the board in remedying this situation. Raising the rates once a year is not going to fix this deficit. A rake hike is, hike is like the little Dutch boy sticking his finger in a leak in the dyke. It may fix it for a moment, but then it just gets bigger until it's out of control, and we are overwhelmed. Thank you for your time. Oh, and I have fifty-four Prop. 218 protest votes to submit.
Would you give those to our clerk?
On Tullieville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Rebecca Quintana, and I live at one five five Two-Four Avenue three eighty-one in Seville. I don't want to repeat myself, but the two ladies before me hit everything that I was going to say today. Our concern is that we want to work with the county. We're not here for any freebies. We know it takes money to run a business, but we would like to sit down and, you know, set up a sustainable rate so that we all can budget ourselves together. And it's just about open communications, you know? People don't know about our deficits. They don't know what's going on within the office here in Tulare County. But when that is shared, you know, it's a better understanding among the people. And again, I want to give you some protest votes for the town of Seville on Proposition 218. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Give those to our clerk.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that, you know, we talk about raising rates, not accomplishing anything, but when you look at, we have on the table four, we're shown the increase that would be needed to bring something currently into balance, and actually, in the case of Seville, a ten percent increase above and beyond would, at this day and age, actually break even. And in the case of Tullieville, it's an eighty-two percent increase to break even. So, you know, we are, in some cases, we are making headway as we, we get to the place, like in this one case, Wells Track, we did not have to increase it this year. And, you know, there, there may come a time, hopefully, when we'll be able to not have to increase in ten percent every year, as we, as we catch up. But I think that's, that's part of the discussion and dialogue, when people say, well, we want, we want to break even. Well, some of them are very close to breaking even now, and that's, that's a good thing, even though it's very expensive.
I'm Randy Talali, and I live at twenty-two eleven Cottonwood Circle in Visalia. I'm a property owner in Yedam, and I understand that the rate increase is pretty much a foregone conclusion, but I would ask the board to respectively look at the long-term issues that are facing the Yedam District. I think last year, I was told that there were about forty or forty-five units that were in the water and sewer hookups, even if it was fifty. We're looking at an increase that, that provides about seven thousand dollars based on fifty units between the water and sewer both, which is at a rate of increase ten percent per year, I think Yedam is going to be in a deficit for, for many years to come. Mr. Estrada, a property owner, Mr. Valero, property owner, myself, my uncle, you know, we all are facing vacancies. If we raise the rents, we'll have vacancies. And it does get to the point where the low-income housing and the labor housing, they can't afford to pay any more rent. We either have to pass these increases along to them, they'll move away, they won't be in the Yedam District any longer, and we have to look at the, the ag labor pool that we do have is going to be migrating. And I don't think they're going to migrate to Tonyville or other areas. I think they'll be migrating outside of Tulare County. So specifically for the Yedam District, looking at this exodus, this potential exodus that I think is starting to occur, we'll be looking at these per-unit increases and per-unit costs at a much, you know, at a reduced number of units. So per unit, certainly that, that cost is going to increase. Your ten percent is capped. You won't be able to recapture this loss for many, many more years. And what I foresee eventually is, at least on one of my parcels where I have five houses, I'll disconnect. I'll tear the houses down, and I'll plant trees. So, you know, if you have fifty, you'll end up with forty-five. And I would imagine that some of the other property owners are no longer going to be paying these full rates. My average rent is four hundred and twenty-five dollars. My water and sewer bill is thirty percent of that. It's, it's a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per unit. So I'm looking at this as a long-term issue. I think that, you know, eventually, the decision is going to come from the property owners, that we're not going to provide farm labor housing. So the capital investment that the county has already made and committed to, and actually borrowing from the general fund for operation, there'll be no repayment. So, you know, I just ask the board to consider that as well. There has to be a better solution somewhere, somehow, and I urge you all to, you know, direct the staff to come up with some of these solutions that must be out there. Thank you.
I, I can assure you, we do have with a couple of our supervisors, especially Supervisor Sheeta, leading that charge, Mr. Talali, and trying to get, it actually takes special legislation to make some of these hookups occur. So we're here with our hands tied behind our back in some ways.
And Yedam, Mr. Chairman, is a somewhat difficult situation, in that we purchase on the sewer's capacity, that's purchased from the Cutler Rosi folks, and as was pointed out in staff report, one of the solutions to this is to increase the number of units, because increasing units with fixed costs, you can usually hope to reduce the overall cost. The problem is that if we're connected to Cutler Rosi, and they don't want to sell us anymore, we have a difficulty there. So we are, we are looking, one thing we are looking at is the possibility of connecting Yedam with Seville and the water system, which, again, by having more units in one system, we may be able to recognize some savings there. So, believe me, there's a lot of effort made, we, this is a serious problem. We deal with this every year. We're always trying to find a way to make it better. But the bottom line is, we're still having this huge subsidy every year, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Guadalupe Nunez, y yo vengo representando a Tonyville.
Mrs. Nunez is representing Tullieville?
Este. Este, yo vengo, como les digo, yo vengo representando a Tonyville. Los problemas allí son bastantes, y yo vengo hablando y representando a cada uno de ellos, quizás.
No más hablen frases cortas para poder ayudarle a traducir. I'm here to talk about the different problems that we experience there in our community of Tullieville, that are many problems that we are facing.
Como ven, los problemas son bastante los que tenemos. Estábamos pagando cuarenta y nueve dólares con cincuenta centavos. Ahorita quieren cobrarnos cinco dólares más.
We're currently paying forty-nine fifty per month on our rate, and you're asking us for an increase of five-plus dollars, and that is a difficulty, a new difficulty that we have to face.
Como ustedes ven, eso es muy duro para nosotros. Nosotros que trabajamos, por ejemplo, en el field, es muy duro que usted nos estén subiendo a cada rato los bilis del agua, cuando no del, del agua, del trenaje.
This is something very difficult for us that we have to face. Again, like I mentioned, we are in a community mainly agricultural workers, and this is a tough situation for us that we face every time the rates are increased, not just in the water supply or the sewage.
Acaso ustedes se han puesto a pensar cuánto muchas de las veces uno se queda sin comer para pagar los bilis.
Have you stopped to think how many times many of us have not even eaten or found food to supply to our families, because we want, or we have the need to pay our bills instead, so we end up not having anything to eat?
Ustedes a cada rato les están subiendo a nosotros en el field. Nos aumentan una cola, se piensan para pagarnos una cola o un dólar al año, y cuántos tiempos se piensan para aumentar, o sea, pagarnos un poquito la tarifa de lo que nos están pagando por hora, y en cambio ustedes de un sopetón, o sea, de un, nos aumentan cinco dólares.
Many of you receive a wage increase, a significant wage increase. We as ag employees or farm labors, we basically are mostly times only receive an increase of a quarter, sometimes rarely a dollar. But have you stopped to think how that really turns out or calculates out to be? And now you're asking us for a five-dollar increase on our monthly rates.
Ahora estos cinco dólares podríamos alimentar el estómago de uno de nuestros hijos.
And this increase, and the five-dollar increase, can, we can use to feed our family and our children?
A veces nos dan cuatro o seis horas en el field de trabajo, qué es lo que ganamos, y se los vamos a dar a ustedes, eso no es justo.
Sometimes, you know, we only work four or five hours out in the field, so you can imagine how much we earn, and now that earn, those earnings, we're going to have to give them to you to pay for our rates, so that is not fair. What can we do? I mean, what are we going to have to do?
Ahora mi agua nunca me hicieron una colección bien. El agua se me regresa para atrás. Yo vivo a las doce y seis cincuenta y uno. Yo vivo a la 12651, y hay otra persona enseguida que vive al terreno más bajo, y eso se le hunde. La colección que hicieron del agua del trenaje no la hicieron bien.
The other point I want to make is on the water collection or some maintenance that was done in the area was not done appropriately, in particular to her residence address and one of her neighbors, they still experience problems.
El agua se regresa para atrás y cuando flocha muchas de las veces, ahorita está más o menos, más o menos bien, pero cuando llueve, el agua se regresa para atrás y la flocha uno, y a veces se sale la suciedad para arriba donde...
And she's referring in particular to the drainage system, that they're still experiencing problems, especially during the rainy season, in particular, she gives example, when they flush, it does not flush accordingly, and of course, they have to live with, you know, a situation that is not sanitary for their household.
Ahora, yo pienso que los contratos y un papel firmado muchas de las veces es válido. Nosotros hicimos un contrato por 30 años de pagar 30 dólares, que fue hace 14 años en este mes, que fue cuando nos hicieron la colección esa del trenaje. Entonces los papeles no son válidos ni son respetados, a esta fecha cuánto no lo han subido.
I understand that contracts and signatures on the contracts are very valuable and very important. We made a contract, a 30-year contract that we signed, which came to an end this month, but my opinion is that that contract was not abided or executed accordingly.
El señor que nos llenó estas formas, que yo creo que debe haber sido uno de los trabajadores que trabajan en la corte.
The gentleman that helped us fill out these forms, I'm not sure who it might have been, it could have been some employee of the court.
Eso nos dijo que nos iban a cobrar 30 dólares.
He told us that we were going to be charged $30 for 30 years, so he lied to us.
Él mintió.
And that was a contract that he lied to us.
Tiene que haber un papel donde diga, empezamos a, nos empezaron a cobrar 30 dólares. Ahorita estamos pagando 49.50, no los quieren aumentar 5 dólares más.
There's got to be a document or a contract somewhere that tells us, or that should have told us about the increase. Since we signed the agreement initially, we were told we were going to be charged $30, and now you're charging us 49.50, I don't understand where this change is coming from.
Ahora tomen en cuenta, yo creo que es mucho lo que estoy hablando, que también estoy pagando el agua de tomar, el agua de tomar no sirve, el agua está contaminada.
You also got to keep in mind that I also need to pay for drinking water.
Como ustedes saben, cuando no nos dan agua de trenaje, como si fuéramos animales, nos dan agua de pozo.
When we don't receive water, drinking water, we have to buy our own water, and that's treating us as being animals that do not deserve clean drinking water.
Yo he ido con una de las trabajadoras que trabajan con nosotros, y yo una vez me metí a donde nos están dando el agua donde tienen el hoyo, le meten barriles, barriles de cloro al agua. En todos modos, esa agua sale con nata cuando la hervemos, no sirve para tomar, no más para cuando nos bañamos con ella, o cuando vamos a usarla en lavar algo afuera.
The water we have available is basically not drinkable water, we could only use it to bathe, but not necessarily to cook or to drink.
Así es que dicen que hay fondos, esos fondos, ¿donde se están yendo?, porque yo sé que hay fondos allí para Tonyville.
We are told that...
Adelaron las dos calles primeras.
We are told that Tonyville has some funds available, but we are not sure where those funds are available, some streets were maintained.
Las tuberías siguen igual pésimas.
I'd like to step in here. We're talking about the rates that are under our jurisdiction, and the LSID water rates in Tonyville are not under our jurisdiction, so please keep your comments to what's under our jurisdiction and...
Le pide que mantenga sus comentarios a los diferentes lugares en cuanto al que tiene que ver la jurisdicción de este condado, and Tonyville, no está bajo la jurisdicción de este condado.
Nosotros pagamos el agua, el trenaje, y la basura aparte. Cada uno es un precio, 59 que quieren que paguemos, 54, 50 que paguemos del agua de esta del sol. Estamos pagando, yo estoy pagando 127 del agua de tomar, cuando no nos sirve para tomar, aparte del gasto que tengo que compro, donde voy a llenar ahí la torrecita para tomar, ve, aparte de la basura que tengo que pagar aparte.
Let her translate, please.
Basically, she's saying that, she asked for you guys to keep in mind all the different bills that they're paying, not just the drinking or sewage, but the drinking water that they have to pay for, and the different bills and utilities that they have to cover.
I'm fully aware of your water bill, I drink half the same water bill you have, so we're here really to talk about the sewer.
Él está enterado de las tarifas en cuanto al agua que ustedes tienen disponibles, y le pide que se enfoque en el sistema de drenaje que va a afectar a su área.
Bueno, yo también hice ese comentario del agua porque pues es cosa que yo estoy pagando, y es mucho para mí lo que yo estoy pagando y lo que me quieren aumentar.
She understands, she just wants to make aware for you guys to take that into consideration, the different types of payments she's...
Yo quisiera que se pusiera la mano en el corazón, y yo un día fuera para yo invitarles un vaso de agua del que yo me tomo a veces, o del que se toma los niños cuando no se dan cuenta, del agua de afuera de la llave.
I ask you to take into consideration the difficulties we have to base, and I invite you to, one day, for you to visit me, and I will give you a glass of water so you can see the type of water my children and all the children in our area drink.
Yo quisiera que tomen en cuenta eso, y los agradezco de todo corazón, que como les digo, tomen en cuenta la proveza de la gente también, que no es justo de que nos están aumentando los biles cada rato, cada rato, y que es muy duro nosotros para ganarnos el dinero y el sustento en el field, porque no es lo mismo estar ustedes sentados aquí en estas sillas con aire acondicionado que nosotros muriéndonos de sed en el field.
I ask you to take into consideration our comments and to also consider that we are poor people, and it's not fair that these rates are increased, it's not fair that you guys are sitting here under air conditioning, and we are out in the field suffering the heat or the winter, and it's not fair that this is going to be applied to us.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Única, nomás por favor, única.
You've had enough time, we're going to have, put a three-minute clock up, ma'am, you've had enough time, tell her that she's done.
She wants to present the protests.
She can present them, then she's done.
Right.
Give them to the clerk.
That's what she's going to do.
Ojalá que los votos los tomen en cuenta, como ustedes cada cosa lo hacen en votos, lo tomen ustedes también.
¿Qué es el número de votos? ¿Qué es el número? ¿Cuántos son?
Son, me hace que son 38.
There's 38 votes in there.
She's just asking to have those considered.
Thank you.
Take those into consideration.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify on the translation, when she was talking about the 30 years, she said the 14 years have gone by, the contract has not ended yet, but it's still continuing for the next 16 years.
I apologize for that.
And there, a three-minute clock is going to go up, my error, I should have mentioned that in the beginning, we'll have a three-minute time limitation, and we will end this public hearing at 11 o'clock. Sir, your...
Hello, my name is Merle Bailey, I live at 2495 Alfred Avenue in Exeter, or in Tullieville, and unlike the ladies that were up here, I know my family's been there since 1954, and the sewer project was started in 86, 87, and I know that this board wasn't there then, but the Board of Supervisors forced us, they took the right-of-way through eminent domain, and forced us to put the sewer in, a lot of people didn't want it, and now you're forcing us to pay an outrageous price for the sewer that we get. It's not fair to the people that live there, a lot of the people that live there weren't living there when the sewer was put in, they had no idea when they bought property there that it was going to be like this, and it wasn't, they've never, like, they've said, they've never been notified. I came to a lot of the board meetings when they were doing that, enforcing us through eminent domain, and they were going to contain our properties if we didn't hook up to the sewer. The county made us do this, and now you're making us pay an outrageous fee for the sewer that we get. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Maria Herrera, and my address is 41796 Road 105 in Sultana. I also work with the Community Water Center, and as the board has heard today, there is many concerns in the communities that are going to be affected with this rate increase because we know that they're going to have real impacts. We are talking about the lowest-income communities of Tulare County, and I share their concerns, I grew up all my life in low-income communities here, so I know firsthand what it is that they are talking about. I do want to point out, though, that the message is very clear from everybody, both the board and the community, that raising the rates is not going to provide solutions for neither side. I know, Mr. Worthley, you pointed out that Seville will be breaking even, but the reality is that even that community is not sustainable, because even with this rate increase, there will be no money there for reserves or future problems, so again, we're left with an unsustainable system that is potentially, the only thing that's creating is room for there to be more of a deficit. Clearly, that's not the answer, we need to change our ways. Today, I believe, is the day that the board can do something different and agree to work with the communities and come up with a more sustainable solution. That could include looking at helping and supporting communities connecting to more sustainable systems. I think that that is a role the Tulare County Board of Supervisors need to play in order to help these communities. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pauline Alvarado, I live in Seville, 38368 and a half. When we first connected to the sewer line, we had a good septic tank. We weren't supposed to be charged so much, so we went ahead and went with the program. We're disabled, and every year it's more and more money that we have to pay. I live right now in Dinuba with my mother, because yours back, my house burned down there, but my mother pays 59 to 77 dollars a month, that includes her trash, water, and sewage. Is it fair for us to have to pay that much money? You know, that's another question. They combine three things in one, and we're paying 59, we're going to pay 59 for one. So, what consideration is it for, that you guys have for us? I know we're using the system, well, I haven't used it in three years, but we use the system. So, is it going to later on include trash and everything else together? You know, it's kind of hard because us being as poor as we are and having to put out so much money is difficult. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laurel Firestone, I'm with the Community Water Center, and I'm currently also serve on the Water Commission and have been working with Supervisor Ashida on a pilot project that we're trying to do to look at more sustainable solutions for water and wastewater. I think this hearing highlights how unsustainable our current system is and what a huge need we have to urgently address this issue, for the county's sake, as well as for the sake of residents in all of these communities. You know, as you've heard today, there are many, that many of the poorest areas of our county are paying, as you know, some of the highest rates, many areas have a median household income of 13,000, and meanwhile, the county is increasing its debt load every year. This is the classic lose-lose situation for everyone, and rather than continuing to feed into this cycle, I would propose that the, that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to work with us, certainly the Community Water Center volunteers to work with the county, as well as community groups that have come forward today, to look for a real success and a real permanent solution. Certainly, solving the problem is not just covering the county's costs, it's also finding an affordable rate that is going to be fair and affordable for people that live there into the long term, and not having to continue every year to come back and have these sorts of hearings to increase rates exponentially. There really doesn't seem to be an end in sight to needing to increase rates in a lot of these systems, and even where there is, the rates have gotten to a point where it's truly unaffordable for people that live there. I share Supervisor Ashida's vision that, that we've, what we really need is, is to look for ways to reduce costs by creating economies of scale, it's not sustainable to have, you know, 60-something homes of some of the poorest residents in our state support the operation of an entire wastewater system, as you've seen, and, and again, rather than continuing to just increase rates, I would hope that we can instead take a step back here today and, and look at what a sustainable solution is. Last, I'd just like to point out, we, you know, there's a number of Prop. 218 protests, we also have some Prop. 218 concerns in terms of making sure that tenants that had, that have, that paid directly to the system also received notices, and I'm not sure if they did, so I would just flag those legal issues and concerns that we have regarding Prop. 218 procedures. And again, I look forward to working with the board and hope that the board will move today to solve the problem rather than continue it. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? So you're requesting that the board increase its subsidy?
I am requesting that the board actually permanently solve the problem, already the board is increasing its subsidy each year and then charging interest to residents, you know, an increasing amount each year, so not, not the percentage is increasing, but the amount that residents have to pay is increasing each year.
So you are asking us to increase our subsidy this year?
No, I'm asking you to solve the problem so that you don't have to do subsidies. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on this item?
My name is Juan Sandoval from Wellstrack. Couple of things, it's all been that we pay and we pay and we pay. The maintenance crews that take care of these facilities, is there any supervision on your part as to what kind of work they do? Is any of this money going for pay raises?
If I can answer those two questions, we have a trained staff that supervises all the work, and no one received pay raises this year.
No one? Okay, that's, I wanted to know that.
Actually, everybody took a step back by about 2%.
Now, these people that go out to the field, they are just on, on their own, they work on their own, any supervision at all? Do they report to anybody as to what kind of work they do?
Everyone reports to somebody about the work they do. I mean, it's, I mean, we have an RMA staff that oversees the contracted provider.
It's not county employees that do this, this is contract work.
Mr. Fussell, I believe, is who made the presentation.
So, the contractor says, "Okay, I'll do this work for $200,000," and you guys say, "Okay," and he does it, right?
Part of the issue we have, and I think you're trying to address it, is that the work that we, that's being done on some of these systems, or some of the community service districts, or the public utilities districts, are mandated by the state of California, and through their process, like, I know Strathmore Public Utility District has to have an audit of their books every year that costs a substantial amount of money, a certified audit, where they really could get by with a regular accountant's audit, but it costs them five times more to do this audit than they need to spend. The same thing is true when you start looking at the levels of the water quality, you have to have certain certificates mandated by the state of California to even go look at these systems. to even go look at these systems. And there are very few certificated people in that profession, so it escalates the cost for every district. And that's not mandated by our county or any county. That's mandated by the state of California. So in our cases and some other cases, we hire contractors to perform that work.
Okay. One more question. Can I unhook and put my own well up? And sewer system? Once it hits, I figure once I hit paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I'm going to set up my own system, so I'm going to unhook.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Last call. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We do have an issue. I'd like to have our county council address it this time.
Okay. Actually, I would recommend that we not close the public hearing. We just close the public comment portion. We do need to continue the public hearing, at least as to those systems that have filed written protests. And I, according to my notes, that was Tulleville, Seville, and Toneyville.
I'll amend what I said then to close the public comment period.
Okay, and, but you could go ahead and close the public hearing on the other systems, but those three systems, we need to remain, to leave those open. And...
I have Tulleville, Seville...
And Toneyville. And then we would recommend that you continue this action until next week so we can count the protest.
Mr. Chairman?
For those systems.
I'd like to just make a correction for the lady that I was translating for. She is from Toneyville, not Tulleville.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, we have received Prop 218 votes from Tulleville, Seville, and Toneyville. We'll bring it back to the board for any discussion before we take action.
I have some questions. Brett, Mr. Bailey brought up something that I was unaware of on the system that was installed in Tulleville. And I'd like a little more history on that. And if, I'd just like to get a little better background. If we forced those people into that system, we have an obligation, in my opinion.
Supervisor Ashida, I'm going to have to go back to the office and research that because I'm not familiar with that issue.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have then a, we can correctly say this. We're going to close the public hearing then on all other systems with the exception of Tulleville, Seville, and Toneyville.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So we'll entertain a motion or action?
I just want to make one quick comment, Mr. Chairman. It's a very difficult thing to raise rates, especially during this economic time. However, we are elected to be responsible stewards of the taxpayers' money. And so we do need to raise the rates and act responsible on behalf of all of the taxpayers in Tulare County, not just the users of these systems, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment also, and it's really in response to a comment made by Mrs. Firestone, and that is, there are two, there really are two issues here. Today is dealing with operations. These are real numbers. This is the cost of running these systems. Even with the proposed rate increases today, we would have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar subsidy to maintain these systems. And as was pointed out, this is not a sustainable situation. However, those are the numbers. Those are the costs. And as was pointed out by Mr. Ashida, some of those costs are driven up because of new state mandates, more testing of the water supplies, and on and on. And the benefit, of course, of having large operations, I go back to Los Angeles. I think the municipal water system of LA County is the cheapest water in the nation, even though the water is brought from the Colorado River and from the Sierra Nevada, and it's desalinization. It's very expensive water. But because they have so many people paying into the system, it is at least expensive. It's very expensive trying to maintain these systems where you only have sixty-five hookups. So there is the short-term problem of keeping the systems going, continuing to have water, continuing to have sewer, and minimize the impact to the general fund, this revolving fund. And that's what this hearing about is today. There is, then, the long-term issue, the long-term sustainability issue. These are not sustainable long-term. And the long-term issues are being fought on various fronts. It's being fought by the Water Commission. It's being explored in Traver, where we're looking at a different type of sewer type of treatment system that might have great promise for unincorporated communities. It's being addressed in the general plan of Tulare County, which is going to look at giving opportunities for these unincorporated communities to grow and have populations that can support these systems because we'd have more users using the system and paying into the system. There are many things being worked on that are long-term. They don't deal with the short-term problem, which is today, we have to keep the lights on. We have to keep the water flowing, and that's what we're, and that's what we're about today. And I've been through these hearings eleven times, and they are gut-wrenching every time we have to do them because these are the poorest people in Tulare County paying some of the highest rates, and that is a reality. It will not be fixed today, but I do think it will be fixed. I do think we're working in directions that are going to bring real resolution. Unfortunately, we won't see it today. We probably won't see it, we may not see it for five years. But we're, I think we are addressing these issues and going in the right direction. So I feel like it was important to say those things. I don't think we have any choice but to raise these rates again today because, again, even with the rate increases, we still are looking at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar subsidy. And we are making progress on certain fronts in terms of getting into, you know, getting to the point where they are going to be breaking even, even if the costs are very high. So I think it's important to say that, and I would move to approve the recommended rates increases by the RMA staff.
I'd second that.
But less the three that we have to...
We're only applying these to the...
What I'd like to make a comment to is that the facts are the facts. And it's like the state of California, which hasn't realized yet they're broke. There's only so much money. And we can only deal with limited amount of money. We can't print our own. Hopefully, we will be funded in the Water Commission shortly to where these issues will be put forward in a public forum on a public outreach on how do we make sustainable communities. But the facts are the facts. There may be some of these communities that are not sustainable. And I think people need to realize that there's nothing you can do except for understand what the facts are. I remember forty years ago, when I rented a house in Biola, it cost me eighty-five dollars a month for rent, but my butane bill was ninety dollars. So I moved into a place I thought I got really cheap rent, and this winter came, and I got a butane bill that was more than my rent. And I think that's what we face since a lot of our rural communities. Your rent may be real low, but your other costs, like sewer water, butane, utilities, eat up the difference between, you may have a little savings versus living in a town, but there's always a reason why rents are low is because you're going to pay a price in another place. So reluctantly, I think the facts are that we have to go ahead and raise these rates. But I'm looking forward, hopefully shortly, to where we can really address some of these, some of these systems and see if they're sustainable or make them sustainable. And we're finally getting some financial help. Well, when the check clears, we're going to get financial help to make this a public forum and to get something done.
Supervisor Ennis, you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Ashida. Pass your votes. Unanimous, and very difficult. Thank you, Mr. Fussell.
The board does need to go ahead and continue the hearing on the three systems that we have the Prop 218 protests on so we can count and announce those protests, and the board can take action at that time.
Okay, so entertain a motion to continue Tulleville, Seville, and...
Next meeting.
Next week.
Toneyville.
Shall we move?
Move by Worley, second by Ennis. So let's continue till next week. Okay, we'll now move to public hearing, item number four, request from RMA to authorize submission of '09 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Allocation Application.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I can wait a moment here till it quiets down. Okay. My name is John Hess. I'm with the Resource Management Agency. And as the chairman mentioned, this public hearing is being held to consider, to receive and review public comments, solicit public input regarding the 2009 Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG Enterprise Fund Application, the 2009 CDBG Planning and Technical Assistance Application, and the closeout of two 2006 CDBG Planning and Technical Assistance General Applications. A sign-in sheet is being distributed currently, though signing that sign-in sheet is voluntary. We do request, we do appreciate your doing so. Spanish translation was advertised. However, those services were not requested. The objective of the overall CDBG program is to develop viable communities through the, through providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income. All projects that are funded by CDBG must carry out at least one of the following national objectives. One, benefit to target income group persons. Two, aid in the elimination or prevention of slums and blights. Or three, meeting urgent community development needs. It is recommended today that the county apply for a three-hundred thousand dollar Enterprise Fund grant to continue the Tulare County Micro Enterprise and Business Assistance Programs for a two-year period. And in addition to that, approve the guidelines for the Business Assistance and Facade Improvement Programs. The proposed activities will benefit approximately fifty-five low-income Tulare County residents and will include business training and counseling, micro enterprise and business assistance loans, and support services. It is also recommended that the county amend the budget of an existing CDBG Enterprise Fund Allocation, standard agreement number 07EDEF3721. It should be noted that the resolution should be corrected to note that the modification of the budget will be decreasing the micro enterprise activities and increasing, or rather decreasing, the business activity and increasing the micro enterprise activities by a hundred and fifteen thousand, not a hundred and fourteen thousand, as it now notes. This amendment is being requested in order for the program to adapt to the current demand for services. It is, in addition, recommended that the county apply for a seventy thousand dollar grant under the Planning and Technical Assistance Allocation for two purposes. One, to establish a water and sewer and stormwater master plan for the community of Cameron Creek Colony in partnership with the city of Farmersville, and to prepare a ten-year plan to end homelessness in partnership with the Tulare Kings Continuum of Care. These proposed activities will meet the CDBG national objective mentioned earlier of providing benefit to the targeted income group by one, restricting participation, or two, principally benefiting low-income residences of the unincorporated areas of the county. Participants will not be charged for these services, and no one will be displaced as a result of these services. Finally, in July of 2007, the county was awarded a hundred and forty thousand dollars in CDBG Planning and Technical Assistance Funds in both seventy thousand for economic development and seventy thousand for general allocations. The activities that were completed under, by using these funds were the preparation of the Traver Park revitalization and reuse study, final plans and specifications for the Tulleville Water System improvements, business assistance revolving loan fund documents, and an over-the-counter pre-application. All of these projects have been completed, and closeout for these two grants is requested today. We have invited members of the public to submit written comments to the County Tulare Resource Management Agency Community Development and Redevelopment Division at 5961 South Moonee Boulevard, Visalia, California, 93277. In addition, information and supporting documents are on file physically at that same address between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m., Mondays through Thursdays, and eight to noon on Tuesdays, or Fridays, rather. All Tulare County CDBG programs are implemented in ways that are consistent with the county's general plan and commitment to fair housing and equal opportunity. Applicants are not and will not be discriminated against on the basis of race, color, ancestry, religion, national origin, gender, marital status, or physical handicap. Any assessments resulting from a CDBG-funded project will not be paid by members of the lowest targeted income group. And technical assistance is available to groups representing the targeted income group persons that request such assistance in developing proposals. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I take questions if there are. And it is, this one's a public hearing as well.
Any questions? I have one quick question. Oh, so the facade program. Is this the first time we've offered the facade program through this CDBG funding?
It's the second time. We did it last year in the '08 allocation as well.
Did we use any of it?
We have not. We actually haven't officially gotten the contract for those funds from the state yet.
Okay.
We haven't initiated the program.
Great. Well, a great program that Visalia eliminated while I was on council, and I wasn't happy they eliminated it, but it's a good opportunity to spruce up the storefronts and increase business. Okay. No other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for consideration. Other questions?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Vanderpool.
Second.
Second by Ennis. Cast your votes. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now adjourn as Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Tulare County Redevelopment Agency and take up public hearing item number five.
Yes. This one is actually not necessary to be a public hearing, but it's immediately following...
Well, it's listed under my public hearings as timed items.
Okay. Well, it's in reference to the item immediately preceding this. It's a grant match funds to be committed to the 2009 Economic Development Enterprise Fund Application to be used in these communities specified, that is Early Mart, Cutlerosi, and Pixly. And those will be used for micro enterprise services. Facade is one of those services.
Okay. So you know, I do see that here it's under our timed items, but it's not listed as a public hearing. But anyone wishing to address this item from the board or public, may if they wish? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. With a, just a quick question. Any impact from the state budget in terms of, I mean, we're not talking about a tremendous amount of money here, but I know we have to be watching our Ps and Qs, redevelopment dollars that are being lost?
As the, so the redevelopment loss affecting our ability to commit these funds? No, that's not going to be affecting these funds. We'll be able to go ahead and commit to this anyways.
Will you be reporting to us sometime in the future about what the impacts of the...
I'd have to defer to the Assistant Director, Bill Hader, on that.
He can tell me later.
Walking up here.
And we'll do that in some day in the future, Mr. Hader. Okay. I've moved by Worley, second by Vanderpool. Is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to our other untimed items, item number forty-one. Mr. Klein, I apologize for having you sit here so long. I noticed you were anxiously waiting your turn. Thank you for waiting, and we'll turn the time over to you.
The agenda item that's before the board is self-explanatory. Do you have any question?
I do not have any questions. Are there any questions?
No.
That's all you'd like to say about it? I know you'd like to say more.
I would.
So the request is to approve a reduction in the allocation of KDA positions for the Welfare Fraud Investigation Unit. No other discussion?
Move approval.
Seeing none, move by Ashida.
Second.
Second by Ennis. Thank you for waiting your turn, Mr. Klein. Item number forty-two, presentation by Chief Sutherland in regards to our Waukina Fire Station.
Forgive me, but I may take a little longer than my esteemed colleague. Steve Sutherland, County Fire. Call how to operate the technology here. It's a sad day for me as the fire chief. I'm here to recommend to you that, and inform you in a sharing manner, that we're going to reduce our count in our fire stations. It's specifically the Waukina Station, Station 24. I've not yet, in thirty-nine years, had to reduce... I've, uh, I've not yet in 39 years had to reduce staff or, or close a fire station, this is a first for me. Okay. Wauquina Fire Station, Station 24, this is the structure, we own the building. Initially, we, uh, leased the land from, uh, the railroad, and another family, or a family purchased it from the railroad, so we're in a shared environment there. We don't know yet what the outcome of our departure will represent, whether that family, our landlord, will want us to take our fire station facility with us or, or leave it. But, uh, we have until April to work that out, that's when the current lease expires. The firefighter response record, um, actually in, uh, 2008, I began reviewing the, uh, response record for all the firefighters throughout the county, not just Station 24, but all 380-plus firefighters, and found some alarming numbers that, uh, put us at risk, uh, with the, uh, OSHA regulation to train. Uh, and if our firefighters are not trained in the work that we ask them to do on the emergency scene, and they, they suffer a, a significant injury that causes OSHA to investigate, uh, we become subject to fines and other penalties relative to lack of training and preparation. So that's directly related to what this represents. There are six firefighters represented here, one for each line, horizontal line, as you can see in 2008, one person exceeded an average of two hours a month, the others did not. Uh, 2009, the numbers haven't got any better, and in fact, in July, five of the six self-selected to resign their membership in the fire department, and one member transferred their membership to the Tulare Station, Station 25. Uh, just a reiteration of, of events, uh, it was, uh, a year ago that I began the, the review of all 28 fire companies. It was a quarterly review, in October, the second review occurred. We reiterated the, the, you know, necessary steps to correct the behavior, encouraged participation, and made non-participation results known to those at risk. Remarkably, uh, some took us, uh, many took us serious, but, uh, December, in December, we recommended resignations to avoid termination. Some folks decided to resign, uh, recognizing that, that things change, everybody's life undergoes changes over the years. Uh, those that did resign received, uh, uh, thank yous from the fire chief for their years of service, with the, the condition that should things improve in their life, and they can once again recommit to the, the fire service in Tulare County, we would welcome them back. The turnout, we have noticed, uh, since the, uh, monitoring, if you will, of the response hours and training hours, that we're actually beginning to see more people show up. Now, that, that's, I'm sure in concert with our economy the way it is too, that there's an opportunity for a little added value in the way of income here, when you respond more, you get paid more. In March, we held a, a community meeting in Wauquina, we had about 25 people show up, most were, uh, interested in the service and where it was coming from. We, uh, we distributed three application packets shortly after that, uh, to potential candidates, none were returned. And in July, uh, again, we had one firefighter transfer their membership to Tulare, and the other five, uh, resigned. So it is my intent that on September 1st, uh, we will decommission Station 24 and Engine 24 and use our, our resources in another way. The, uh, service continues to respond, uh, from Tipton and Tulare, as it has for the last year, they've been the first responders into the community, uh, inasmuch that the Wauquina Fire Engine has sat idle. We also have a cooperative agreement, mutual aid agreement, if you will, with Kings County, they're the provider to the city of Corcoran, and as their resources are available, they will respond to Wauquina, that are, that general area with us. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. Uh, one question, Chief, is, uh, do you feel that, uh, you reached out substantially to the community, and I, I know you documented the response, and you feel like you went, reached out to the community to talk to them and bring them in and keep them informed, that they were in control of their own destiny, and, as you said, no, no responses came back? So you feel as if that was very sufficient?
That was the principal theme of our meeting in March, was community participation. Uh, we were encouraging, we, we promoted to the community that, that, uh, it's necessary for them to help themselves in this regard. We, uh, we accessed the, the surrounding neighborhood by handbill distribution, uh, in fact, we, uh, sent those handbills home, school was still in session, and we sent one home with, with every child that attended school that day, that we, that we were in the community distributing those handbills.
And the second question that I have, I do know that Station 25, uh, which is, uh, the Tulare Station is actually located on Page Avenue, and it is within, uh, the Tulare City limits. It is my understanding that as Station 1 is constructed, uh, and moves further south, uh, closer towards Tulare, um, there is also, there, there is the potential, uh, for the decommissioning and relocation of, uh, the Tulare Station. Where do you think that would happen? And if it does happen, do you think it would move further west to meet the needs of the Wauquina community?
Indeed, it would move further west, and in fact, Mr. Rousseau and I just had this discussion last Thursday in a conceptual way. Uh, with the relocation of Station 1, four miles to the south, at the main yard located at Lever's Lane and Avenue 256, that will pick up a better, or better serve the area east of Page and, or Foster Drive and, uh, Mooney Boulevard. You know, the, the Station 25 is at the terminal's end of the, the south end of Mooney Boulevard in Tulare. Uh, it would, it fits nicely to move that fire station west about six miles to roughly Road 68, uh, in which would, again, better serve the community of Wauquina, and continue to serve by and large the community of, of west Tulare and Tipton and Goshen that we currently respond to, uh, the most now, from our Foster Drive location.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other comments? Listed as, this is listed as an action item at resolution, so entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Moved by Ennis.
Second.
Second by Ashida, please cast your votes. It's unanimous, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Last item on our, uh, agenda, this session today is an information-only item, you have the results in front of you, bid opening results for Skoyt Airfield Taxiway Rehabilitation. I don't know that we need a, uh, just a, a information item, including the bid results, this will come to us soon for a, a contract award. So I know we do have reason for closed session today, council, can you, uh, and we do also have one addendum item on our closed session as well.
Right, we do have, um, call for closed sessions, that would be items, um, eighth through H, is listed on your agenda, and item I, as on the addendum, I would like to inquire of the board, do you still want to have the closed session B, which was the, uh, closed session to accompany the Williamson Act matter earlier?
Yes.
Okay, you still want to have that? Okay, then those are the items for closed session, I do not expect to report out.
Thank you, we will adjourn to closed session, thank you for attending today.